Welcome everyone to the April 28th meeting. Please rise to the platform.
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A few down before we get started. Immediately following town council meeting on April 14th, council members entered into executive session to discuss legal matters. Executive session ended at nine forty-five. Council members also held an executive session immediately prior to this meeting, beginning at six thirty PM, and that adjourned at seven ten. The town is requesting assistance from our county's residents and park master site plan questionnaire. Your input is essential for creating high-quality recreational opportunities, park facilities, and trails for generations to enjoy. Please complete by April thirtieth. Share your thoughts. Treasure's trunk is being held on Saturday, May third at eight PM at the HCC parking lot. Please visit the town website for more exciting activities coming up. Other news, a community citation of recognition was awarded to the town of McCandless in the Allegheny County Executive's office for being a two thousand twenty-five banner. Are there any other announcements by anyone else on the council?
Yeah, I'd like to have shout out to Cub Scout Pack Two Seventy-Nine. For the EAC, they went out and cleaned up part of the park on Sunday.
All right.
I would just like to say for any folks in here involved in the Northland Library Garden Gala on Saturday, it was an absolutely fabulous event. Thank you very much for your hard work. And I am so excited to see what's happening in the library.
There was a rabbit there. It's really dirty.
There you go.
Here's a picture of the Cub Scouts from the park.
Two Seventy-Nine.
Thank you again, Troop Two Seventy-Nine. At this time, we will open for a public comment on agenda items. Please come forward, state your name and address. We'll be giving a platform.
Thank you. Green Martin, one oh five eight five. I just want to say, green space is awesome. But when I'm down or when I'm up or I'm making a decision, the first thing I do is get on a trail. And like the poet said, I come into the peace of wild things where they don't worry about anything except survival. I'm reminded of that when I go there and I rest in the grace of the world. And we find peace there. And I'm grateful as all heck to the family that would like that for us to have this land. But it's not the acquisition that I'm here about. It's the lack of communication about this. The council is not good at communication. You have Facebook pages and websites and all of that going on. But when it comes to this, unless I grab one of you outside and talk to you, you don't talk to us here. And are you, you're afraid to answer questions at these meetings even though you know the answers? I mean, you better know the answers or else you're in the wrong place. You make decisions in executive session and come here to vote on them and present a united front with no discussion, no presentation of facts for your voters on, on some things you do, but not all. And transparency is not easy for elected officials. They are always afraid of blowback and resistance. It's not kind to them, but it's absolutely necessary. So woman up or man up and present your case to the public, discuss, debate. These are tax dollars and we have every right to question this purchase. Or don't you have the time for us? If you don't have the time for us at these meetings, then maybe you shouldn't be there. If there have not been an error in the acreage at last month's meeting, this vote would have happened before we even understood or knew what was going on. That, I mean, we were clapping. I had no idea what we were clapping for. I didn't, I didn't understand exactly what that trans transition was. And that was sneaky at best and nefarious and underhanded at worst. In furtherance of your lack of transparency, you've taken away the citizen's ability to listen and watch the meetings via Zoom. And you no longer put the recordings of the meetings online. And then you put time limits on our ability to speak. Five minutes, maybe I want five and a half minutes. I'm a citizen here. I don't like this. Communicate with us. This is wonderful, but you don't do that. You don't just pop it in there and spend five hundred thousand dollars. That's what happened over here ten years ago with that space that we call the History Center, which is awesome, but was there a plan? No, oh, it's only going to cost us a hundred fifty thousand dollars. It ended up costing us seven hundred thousand dollars. Where'd that money come from? We had no idea. It wasn't in the budget. Where in the budget are some of these things? So that is my comment. Thank you for allowing this time.
Thank you for those comments.
Irene Caliendo, one oh five five eight Castle Lane. And I, and just for the record, am going to read what I sent in an email, just so that it's on the record. I'm writing concerning the proposed purchase of the acreage adjacent to Potter Park. The proposal is to purchase this land for four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars using municipal funds. I know that a vote on this matter is scheduled for tonight's town council meeting. While I endorse the general goal of preserving green space, based on the available information, it appears that this vote is at best premature and perhaps ill-conceived. The citizens of McCandless have not been provided sufficient information on this proposal. We certainly have not been given an opportunity to comment on the prospective purchase in a thoughtful or satisfactory manner. We concerned and interested citizens understand that negotiations of a sale are conducted in council's executive sessions. However, this does not and should not negate providing the residents the opportunity to know the facts after council has completed such negotiations, but before a vote to proceed with the purchase is taken. Conducting negotiations in an executive session does not preclude council from scheduling a public hearing at least one meeting prior to any vote. Certainly, conducting the negotiations in executive session does not relieve council of its responsibilities, not only to keep your constituents informed, but to handle the town's business in a transparent fashion. Additionally, because the public does not have sufficient information, I do not know if this is a good or bad idea. Further, I submit the council doesn't have sufficient information to render that decision either. Based on the information the public does have, it seems that council does not have the answers to any of the next step questions, such as, does council know if four hundred ninety-six thousand dollars is a fair market price for the land? What if easements with Franklin Park cannot be negotiated? What else needs to be done to this land to make it usable? What's a specific use of this land? How much will further development cost? Are other more appropriate parcels of land available, et cetera? Indeed, has anyone even asked these questions? I mean, truly, we would, I mean, you may know the answers, but it's not apparent to us that you know the answers to these questions. Since a community survey has been undertaken, why has council decided to make this very significant purchase before the results of the survey are available? Why has council not given the citizens a genuine opportunity to offer input prior to a vote? If a problem with the contract had not been discovered prior to the vote at last council meeting, the public would have had no prior knowledge of this action at all. This most certainly is wrong. In my opinion, council should table the vote until such time as all of the above has happened, both in the interest of good decision-making and transparency. If council's rules do not allow for the vote to be tabled a second time, then the motion should be defeated and reintroduced when all questions are answered. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments.
Hi, good evening. Marsha Caliendo, one oh five two nine Abbey. I, I won't reiterate the prior two speakers' questions that they, they asked us so eloquently. But I do again want to reiterate my issues relative to transparency. You know, two weeks ago, this would have been voted on if you hadn't have tabled it. The purchase price was listed on page ninety-two, ninety-one or ninety-two. Today, this, this agenda, it's like on page thirty-one or thirty-two. When you award a paving contract, when you buy a new vehicle, in page one or page two of the agenda, you state the price. So it, you're giving the appearance that you're trying to hide something. And, and it's, it's just not right. We, it's a big purchase. You know, I, I appreciate the response that you gave me, Mr. Schwend, when I had asked all my questions. Thank you. I hope that all of those questions that I've asked last week and that are being brought up will be addressed for as a matter of public record today. But you have no long-term, short-term plans for this, other than it being passive space. Well, this passes space code word for, we don't know what we're going to do with it. Yeah, you, you haven't done anything in that was in the comprehensive plan relative to Potter Park. We can't get to Potter Park. It's inaccessible. You, and, and it's allegedly a beautiful space. I'll take everyone's word for it who has said that, you know, but most people can't access it. It's, it's, why don't you try to do some of the less your cost things? Wait until the survey that we're spending a hundred thousand dollars on, that I know a lot of it was grant money, but still, you're spending a hundred thousand dollars on a survey, you're putting the cart before the horse. You know, just, just, just wait. And I think we'll all feel better about it. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi there, Kevin Taff from fifteen oh one Ashbury Lane. I actually didn't have much prepared for the night because I literally just heard this about this from a text from a former neighbor. We live at the end of Ashbury Lane, which is directly adjacent to the property that will be purchased. You know, I, I think having extra green space isn't a bad idea, but you know, I, I read the agenda before I got here. And I was kind of surprised to see that there was going to be a vote taken about this tonight, even though the, the survey was going to be open for a couple of days still, which seemed a little strange to me. So I, I agree with the other speakers. My, my main concern is I just want to know a little bit more about what is going to be directly adjacent to our backyard. There's a few people who live at the end of Ashbury Lane. And you know, having a green space is probably better than having a, a high-rise come up right behind our house. And you know, I, I, I would probably rather that than someone else buy it and put up something that could potentially be worse. But I guess I just want to know some things about, you know, would this come right up to our, our, our property? You know, some people have kids right there. So are there going to be now people walking right next to where there are, you know, children playing? So what, what, what will it look like from our backyards? Will it go all the way up there? Will there be new parking placed at Van Drive at the end? Or will it just still be at, at Potter Park? So again, I'm, I'm just, I would just like more details, I think, like some of the other people who have already expressed. It, it could potentially be a great idea, but you know, I just, I was, I was looking at this, oh, I got a couple of days. I can go home and talk with my wife and we can fit out, fill out the survey. And then I saw, oh geez, it's being voted on tonight. So that may not matter. So again, I, if it can be tabled and we can just get more details, I think some of our, our neighbors at the end of that road would be, would be appreciative just because we'd like to know what's, what's going to be in our backyards and what's, what will, will it change the parking situation and the traffic on Van Drive? If there's going to be a second entrance to the park at the end of that property there? I, I'm, I'm not sure, but you know, I just, we'd just like some answers to that, if you don't mind. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Hi, my name's Kurt Quint and I live at twelve hundred Van Drive. And my property is about adjacent to where the proposed purchase of the land for Potter's Park is. I, I want to express support for the idea of purchasing that property. I see that it is an opportunity that is a rare opportunity. I fear that if that is not purchased by McCandless, it would be sold to a developer. And I think any development along those lines would be detrimental to our area. I must say, I, I do agree with some of the previous speakers that I would like to know more of the details as to just like what, what's in mind for the development of it as a park area? I mean, I have ideas as to what I would like to see happen with that as a park. And, and I think that myself and my neighbors on our street would be affected tremendously by it in that we would be the access to that property. So, um, you know, the idea of purchasing, I am all for it. I think it's a bargain really for that much space. If McCandless says nothing with it, that's a good thing. Because to preserve land and a natural environment such as that is very important in this day and age. And I think that it, you know, while people have a right to be concerned as to the details, and I would like to know more of the details myself. But the, the idea of it becoming a park is definitely a good one. And I, overall, I think that it's a very good purchase for the township to make at this point. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Jeff Petrow. I'm the current chair of the Environmental Advisory Committee. With Resolution Eight of two thousand sixteen, the town of McCandless established an environmental advisory committee reportable to town council. Town council has determined that it would further the health, safety and welfare of the residents of the town to create an advisory committee called the Advisor, Environmental Advisory Committee, to help develop and recommend policies and programs at town council to preserve enhanced aspects of the character of the town of McCandless and to address environmental issues in the town. The EAC is currently fully engaged in recertifying McCandless as a gold standard sustainability community, litter control, deer management programs, water runoff and rain gardens, tree restoration and preservation, and several other projects. The EAC is also represented on the town of McCandless Park Master Site Plan Study Committee. With considerations to our mission and our mission statement and to those objectives, the EAC is unanimously in favor of the purchase of additional acreage to expand Potter Park.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional?
Dana Camerata, five thirty Pine Creek Road. Um, I just recently found out about this land that is being purchased. And while I totally echo everyone's concerns about the cost transparency and communication, I will tell you, several years ago, I worked on trying to help preserve four eighty-five Pine Creek Road, which was a thirty-eight acre farm that was going to be turned into thirty-five single unit houses. I live on the opposite side of that road and I live directly at the bottom foothill of this property that you want to acquire. And I can't be happier because one, it will preserve the green space. It will help with the water restoration because of a huge plan of homes or any developer can come in. And I watched it happen with four eighty-five Pine Creek Road. By the grace of God, a single person bought that and is going to preserve that land. At the time, I know the community was looking to possibly buy it or do something to work with Allegheny Land Trust. So I'm just saying that I think everyone here has valid questions, but I also think seize the day. If you have an opportunity to grab that land at a really good price, and even like the last gentleman said, just manage it for deer control, flood mitigation and things of that nature. Because as being on Pine Creek Road, we are experiencing, my husband and I, some landslides from some massive rainfall that by building and disrupting the top of that hill, you know, everything runs downhill. And I can see it only getting worse from our point of view. But that's it.
Thank you for your comments.
Paul Heckman, one oh five two nine Abbey Lane. I've always tried to support council and praise you when I thought what you were doing was really good. And this time, I think this could be something good. I don't know. And I think that's part of the, big part of the problem is in the communications for people to know. Is this in? Being misconstrued by people because we're afraid of the overpopulation, something might be put in there that could be detrimental. What's the zoning for this property? Is it likely that that's going to happen? Or is this like some of the brouhaha that went on over what was going to happen over at the batting cages and driving range? When people don't know, rumors get started, people get upset, things go poorly because people get mad about. I don't know if this is a good idea or a bad idea. Do I support it or not? So I, I would hope that you've done all of the due diligence in spending almost a half a million dollars. Because it's a lot of money that I know is, I have the cap, I have the budget in front of me. I know it's not in this budget for twenty twenty-five. I understand that yes, there's some reserve fund that this money can be taken out of, but is that the right thing to do either? A good deal is a good deal unless it's not a good deal for the town. But we don't know. There's just not enough information here in what's been told us. And after last meeting, when we said, wait, that was on page ninety-one to find it. I would have thought that in today's agenda, the purchase price would have been in the resolution, just like it's in the resolution to, for every other thing that's going to be voted on tonight to pay money for. It's not a secret because you have it in the document. It's just not easy to find because this time it's on page thirty-one instead of page ninety-one. But still, if you've not gotten through the whole document, you'd have no idea how much is being spent. I think a lot of the people last meeting actually applauded because they thought it was a donation. Because there was no mention of a price, would seem, would have seemed reasonable to go, yeah, this is really nice. She's giving us some land up there. That would be great. Again, communication just was, was totally lacking. And I think there's still a lot of questions that should be answered for the public before this is done as a done deal. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other public comments?
Seven time. Nine six three five Old Coomer Road, Allison Park, VA one five one oh one. I'm going to, seven hours, seven hours. Planning Commission agenda was posted seven hours before the planning commission meeting. And there was a vote taken at that meeting. And it was only seven hours notice prior to lead it. So I have to say, I looked for the agenda the night before. I don't remember what made the planning commission meet, and there wasn't anything there. So I was pretty surprised to see that there was a planning mission meeting. There was an agenda and there was a vote that was taken on La-Z-Driv property. And there's to be a vote on that tonight. I'm not really sure that that fits with the Sunshine Act or the Open Records Act, that seven hours before there's a meeting, um, to post the agenda and then to take a vote at that meeting and then to bring that vote here to council. So that was my concern, that that agenda for the planning commission was only posted seven hours prior to the planning commission meeting. There was a vote taken, even though the agenda was only posted seven hours before, and that now is under twelve B tonight. Twelve D, the meeting schedule, I did a real fast look through the agenda packet. I'd like to comment on that because you know, I like to comment, but I have no idea what comment to make. And then twelve E, Establishment of McCandless, one seventy-five Ad Hoc Committee. Once again, I did a quick look through the agenda. I have no idea what that is. I'd love to comment. I don't know what I'm commenting about. Park survey, you know, I love parks, love green space. I'm just curious who designed the survey. And I want, and it's, I think at the very end, it says, if you want to keep updated, you can turn in your email. Maybe that could just be available for everybody without an email. I've listened to what everyone had to say about the green space. I think people made really good comments. I, um, I really like green space. So I think green space is priceless. So that's my final thing. I still have two minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Are there any other public comments on agenda items? Please.
Good evening. John Harrison, fourteen seventy-three Hedwig Drive. As the last speaker said, usually winter's a meeting going on. We're talking about going all of our way to change things for the developers to give them variances, deviations, whatever. It has to do with green space. So it, this is one where we have total control of this. Right now, the property, we're buying it for four hundred ninety-three thousand dollars. It's just a little over fourteen point seven acres of property, which equals out to be in thirty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-five cents per acre. Now go and try and find a piece of property in McCandless Township for under fifty thousand dollars. Go and find one for under seventy-five thousand dollars. And really, if you look, it's more like a hundred thousand dollars. So are we getting a good deal? Do the math. I would say yes. That piece of property, the one piece of property, which is eleven point four zero nine five acres, changed hands back in twenty twenty, twenty sixteen. That person bought that property for a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar, a hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. They got a pretty good deal on it. So roughly, if you take that number at, uh, the, you know, the going rate there. It works out to be in about fourteen thousand dollars. So in that timeframe, that property owner made an investment. They're going to have a good return on their investment. Now, that property owner also has the pop, that has the chance to, if the borough doesn't take it first and the borough goes and passes on it, that piece of property is going to be listed for, if I were to guess, between the two pieces of property for a million bucks. Then what they can do with that property, depending on how it's zoned. Well, the one piece is, the other piece is, is still a farmstead. The one piece of the property is zoned for residential. So if they were to put half acre lots in, you do the math, fourteen acres, that's twenty-eight homes. Now, obviously, you got to put a road in. So that's going to take back from its own. So we'll make it an even, we'll say twenty homes. Do we really want to go and put twenty homes on a hillside? Do we take all the vegetation off of it? And what does it feed into? Uh, let's see, what is that? That's Pine Creek. And what does Pine Creek feed into? It feeds into North Park. It feeds into the valley. It goes through Hampton. It goes into Shaler and it ends up in Atona. Most of the members that are on council, actually all the members on council, maybe Nicholas may be young enough not to know or been around when it happened. But I was there and I was in Atona and in Sharpsburg when those floods happened back in the eighties. And the wall of water that came down Pine Creek was deeper than this room is. And that was because we had poor management upstream. Now, we also had, it was a hundred-year flood, but still, the water that came down was ridiculous. One inch of water on an acre lot is twenty-seven thousand gallons of water. If it's has forest, if it's has trees on it, half that water can be absorbed in a day. So us not doing this is being, is poor stewardship to the community and to everybody else. So I cannot recommend enough in saying that this is a good deal. And the amount of tax dollars that we're losing from this property, that what they're paying currently on the, on there. I wish my tax prices were three dollars and seventy-eight cents on a piece of property. It's opened my eyes on a few other pieces of property that are in that valley. And I will be having some conversations with other people because I, if that's the case. And I will be having some conversations with other people because I, if that's the case, I have a half acre lot and I know what I pay a year in taxes. And this thing here is way bigger than my half acre lot. And I would love to have a tax record of $3.78. Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments on agenda? Seeing none. Continuing on the minutes for the April 14th meeting. There's been a motion to approve the minutes and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to administrative finance report, the finance report for the month of March 2025 was in your packet. John, do you want to need to review anything?
I have reports in your packet. You'll see year to date, end of March 31st, 2025. On the revenue side, still slightly ahead, $2.8 million compared to around 2.4 last year. Anything of note in there would include some rad, additional rad money that we received this time compared to last year. As well as an increase in building permits. Everything else is pretty much on par with where we were before. Expenses as of March 31st trending at 20.05% as a percent of the budget in 25. Compared to percent of budget in 24 of 21 and a half percent. So basically, in the same situation we were again, once again. You know, main contributing factor to this was snow and ice control, including product and overtime. And that's basically the highlight out of our expenses right now. Checklist is in the packet. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have specifically about any of the checks from the general fund, capital improvement fund, etc.
So that's our financial summary and the checklist thing is in the packet.
Would like to make a motion?
Please, sir.
Like to make a motion to approve checklist in number three dated March 1st, 2025. To March 31st, 2025 totaling 1,269,683.72 cents. As submitted to each member of council and posted on the bulletin board in town website.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion?
I am going to abstain due to the reasons set forth in the manual addressed to George.
Okay, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Communications report for the month of April was included in your packet. If there's any discussions, any questions that can be directed to Mr. Schwend. Seeing none, the junior council members report, I don't believe Yuki is with us here this evening, but that was in your packet for review. Any questions or comments on that?
I will make a comment just for the public record. We will be seeking applications for another junior council person. Over the summer to begin with us in the fall. So messaging will be sent out to the school district about that and John Bajarski is in charge of making those. Don't know, we'll see what the interest is. You know, currently we have one, we've had up to two before, so we could see what we can handle it. And if there's a lot of interest, maybe we can have two. You'd think I would know the answer to that and I don't. Usually it's juniors and seniors. So I think Yuki's a senior, really anybody below junior kind of, you know, might not want to give the reports that we'd ask for, so.
More information to come once that gets to that point. Moving on to liaison reports. The McCandless Industrial Development Authority, there was no meeting. And the North Hills Council of Governments, we also did not have a meeting. Is there any public comment on administration and finance? Please.
On the 19th of April. Our Parks and Recreation Department put together a Easter egg hut for 400 children. Of our community. It was incredibly well done. It was organized with members of town council were there, our administration was there. And it was all done by Ms. Abby LaCausse, who is our director of Parks and Recreation. I just wanted to send her out. And thank her for her efforts. It was incredibly well done.
Last chance, any public comment on administration and finance? Okay, seeing none. Planning and zoning reports, the planning directors report for the month of April 2025.
Planning reports in the council packet, two items on that report. One was a request for bond release, number one, from Rachel Carson Eco Village. The Eco Village had asked for a partial bond release of 101,959.57 cents. After review and inspection by the town engineer, we determined that some of the work they requested release for had not been completed. And the engineer will recommend financial security being reduced by $74,507.8 cents. That'll be a new business item. Number two, Blazer Drive subdivision, plan number five, amendment number three, this is another mortgage subdivision. Part of the master plan had been reviewed, planning commission reviewed this application. To chop up essentially 9732 to 9742 Hopkins Streets along the party walls in order to sell each one of those units individually. Planning Commission did recommend unanimously that that's approved tonight.
Mr. Schwend, was this master plan approved previously?
That was before, yeah, that was before my time, but it was. That question, yeah, that question's been asked before and an engineer could attest to that also. These mortgage subdivisions are chop ups of what we've already seen as the big part of the plan. They're applying for them one at a time. I'm not sure why they are. They could have applied for them all at the same time.
But I guess my question is. With the master plan was approved, how long ago for this?
Three, four years ago.
Four years ago.
We're on that time.
So the only thing that we talked about is amendment on procedure, is that correct?
Um, yeah, so this is the mortgage subdivision. So basically they're coming in with, now the townhomes are built. So they're just doing the separation around the party lines for the townhomes. So it's still in line with the master plan as it was approved. This is now just taking the larger lots and now selling them as little individual lots just over this townhomes.
And to be clear, the developer didn't even have to.
To like give a presentation or, and like go back through accounts. So they did come to planning commission for the approval, but they did not give a presentation.
They weren't required to, were they?
That would be my understanding, yes.
Okay, liaison reports, planning commissioner, Mr. Arlo.
I was unable to attend a person through the travel, but meeting minutes are in your packet.
Any questions? Seeing none, zoning hearing board, Ms. Koolen.
February and March, meeting minutes are in the packet.
Seeing none, public comment on planning and zoning. If there's any public comment on planning and zoning, please come forward, state your name and address.
15101, I just wanted to reiterate the seven hour comment for the agenda being posted. There was a vote taken at the meeting. It's now up for your approval tonight. Despite, there was only a seven hour time window between the time the agenda was posted. And the planning commission meeting. And there was a vote taken at that meeting. And now you're being asked to vote tonight on something that only had seven hours. Between the time it was posted and the meeting happening. I believe that that does not align with the open records and the Sunshine Act policy. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments.
If I could address our concern.
Please, I'm sorry.
Town bulletin board does have agendas posted on them. Mr. Solicitor, is there a requirement for this to be on the website? And is it 24 hour notice? Both, okay.
Thank you. That's great. I'm not sure it's the right place, but I, since it's planning, it's being considered. We spent a lot of money on a plan, 10 year plan by the same company that created the. Survey that is being done. And I looked at the plan that was developed. McCandless Green Space Sustainable Development Plan. And it has all of our parks listed and what is planned for them. And I'm looking at Potter Park and I just want to ask if any of these things have been done. Town should take over ownership of Harmony Lane and pave it or maintain it. To Penn State University gravel specifications to mitigate runoff and make the park more accessible to citizens. Has that been done? Do you know, anybody? No, okay. The next one is organize the parking bump out just north of the park entrance. Has that been done? Open discussions with owners of large lots contiguous to the park to determine whether. Easements can be acquired or whether land trusts might be a future option. I don't know if you checked with the PA Conservancy or the Allegheny Land Bank. About getting that land for us instead of us paying for it. That's a question I'd like to ask. Reconfigure the entrance to the park to eliminate the fall line trail, which causes erosion and deterioration, deterioration. Of the landscape and to provide an entrance laid out according to principles of sustainable trail design. Conduct trail maintenance on the other trails to improve drainage. Take action that reduces runoff and carries sediments. All of these things are in here. And I just wondered if they had been done for Potter Park. Glad we're getting additional land. It's always great. But get stuff done that was required in our plan. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Any other public comment on planning and zoning? Seeing none, recreation reports, Parker the Rec Director, report for the month of April 2025.
Everyone, and thanks again, Mr. Wall, for your comments about the Easter egg hunt. We did have a really good time. We lucked out with the weather for that one. And it seems like all the kids were happy. We had 4,500 plus stuffed Easter eggs. So I think everybody left happy that day, myself included. I just wanted to give a brief update on our land force branch rail project that was halfway completed with assistance. By land force last week. They had two workdays. They had 14 participants. Over two days and they worked for probably eight hours apiece. They said that the, the, the project was made easy by prep time. And materials readied by DPW. So special thank you to DPW for getting those together. Tretters in the trunk is this Saturday. We still have spaces available. If you want to sell any of the junk in your attic or in the basement. Please register online for that. And in May, we are beginning our outdoor recreation programs with yoga, pickleball and tennis. So all of that information is on our civic rec website and can be, purchases can be made online. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, then at this time, we have a presentation from Heather Kyler. From Pashic. Please, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting me tonight. My intent tonight really is just to give an update to council and to the public on the process of this plan. As was stated earlier, our, our firm, Pashic MTR, which is a landscape planning firm, did complete the comprehensive plan. I believe in 2019 and I actually was a little bit of part of that. I just want to make the distinguish. Distinguish that this plan is a little bit different. This is really based on the parks and rec, the overall comprehensive plan, took a look at the ordinances and zoning and did tinker a little bit into. Open space and parks. The comprehensive parks and rec plan that we are completing right now or master site plan. This is something that's really required by the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. It's in order to get some funding to expand and enhance the current conditions of the parks that are. In McCandless. So I just wanted to make that clear. It seems like there's a little confusion of why we're doing another plan. And it really is a different type of plan. Our plans are really based on public input. We really want to hear from everyone, so I'm glad that people are here. We have been at the EAC cleanup day to promote the survey. We're at the Easter egg hunt. And we do have another public meeting coming up, I think June 19th, that'll be held back here in the park. So we do encourage the public to, to attend. A little bit about our, the, just the agenda, project status, existing park analysis, key person interviews. Once again, we are reaching out to the public to, to talk to them about the process here. The questionnaire and then some concept plan development. The importance of this plan really is, like I said, DCNR is one of the major funders of the state. Parks and Recreation in order to be able to apply to acquire any of those funds. Would it be for land or for existing parks or for new trails? They really want to see this in a plan. One of the first questions when you submit a grant is, is this in a plan somewhere? And it's really to be transparent so that the, the town was informed of any of the decisions. So we'll keep a record of that. And these, these strategies are really going to be designed for the next 10 years. Same with the comp, the comprehensive plan. Someone asked why those things weren't accomplished yet. There's, there's priorities in there and there's opportunities. That I'm sure the town is taking into consideration as they implement those, those strategies. We do have a committee, a steering committee. I actually can't recall exactly how many people. Maybe 12 comprised of just residents. Athletic associations, the EAC, pickleball people and some youth as well. So, you know, we're moving forward and they're, they're really here to act as a guide as we move forward with this plan. As far as the schedule, we are in April, almost May already. As I mentioned, we're going to have another steering committee meeting in May. The steering committee is to meet five times. We'll have another public meeting in June. We're going to be closing out the, the questionnaire as well. So once that's closed out, we're really going to kind of sift through that and really look at what priorities have risen to the top. We'll take that again to the public in June to get public comment. And from there, we'll start to really develop some draft concept plans with some costs associated with them. And take a look at any connections, especially with the trails. We really want to form a vision during this plan. What does Parks and Recreation look like for the town of McCandless? We, we all hear, there's North Park there. North Park is great. And it's, it's an asset and we don't want to duplicate services. There's some things over in North Park that the town of McCandless doesn't necessarily need to spend or want to spend money on. Because the, the county is taking care of it. So we, we really want to take a look at what this vision could be. Some of the things that we will use for benchmarking as we move forward with this plan. We're going to take a look, look at some of the national statistics from the National Recreation and Park Association. They do a lot of benchmarking throughout the state, throughout the nation, best practices. And one of the other things that we'll take a look at are some of the recommendations from the DCNR score. They just opened up, what it is, is a state comprehensive plan. And it really will guide us on what they will look at for funding and what their priorities are. And it just actually was completed in the fall of last year. And one of the things they take a look at is. The 10 minute walk of these community parks and how do we get people there? And what, what are the communities that don't have that opportunity? And this is something that we will take a look at in the town of McCandless as well. We'll take an analysis, we already have of the existing parks and what is in the parks. What kind of condition is in the parks? We'll listen to the community again and see, see what the opportunities are as we move forward. We've been talking to a lot of key people. And if anybody here in the audience would like to speak to me. Right? I'd be happy to talk to anybody that, you know, would like to have a conversation with me. We've been, we've talked about 11 people. We've had some trouble reaching out to some of the people on the list. We're still kind of poking through there. A lot of people are very proud of this town. I actually grew up in McCandless. So I'm also proud of the town. I don't live here anymore. But people are really seem to be excited about what the town has in store in the future. Some strengths and opportunities, you know, we heard maybe some addressing some of the ball field. You know, we heard maybe some addressing some of the ball field needs, some of maybe non-ball field needs. What what can we do for the people that don't have children that are playing sports? And what opportunities? Potter Park is a prime example of a place to go and just kind of decompress. We all know through COVID that outdoor space became very important during that time and it hasn't backed down. And that's why, you know, funding has really increased over the years. Currently, we have maybe not right at this minute, but we had seven hundred and sixty three people complete the survey. The survey is open until April thirtieth. We have some additional little business cards. If anybody here has not taken the survey. And that's really just one outreach. In this day and age, it's it's one avenue to reach the community, but there are many other ways. Like I said, we're going to have many public meetings. We're going to continue to talk to associations and in the public. What we're hearing right now. See my glasses. Of course, trails and connections. I mean, right now we're seeing that that's rising to the top. We see that all over in many of the communities. And there's very many opportunities to connect McCandless here. The Commodore Perry Trail that goes through Pine, Marshall, Franklin Park, up into Butler. There's there's probably a way that we can maybe connect with that. The Rachel Carson Trail, the North Park Trails. People like to just get out and walk, so we that was not a surprise. Open space also was rated as one of the top and the survey hasn't closed yet. So this is just preliminary indoor and outdoor recreation space. Pennsylvania has not always the best weather. Today was wonderful, but we know that spring can be muddy and rainy. And so of course, we're going to hear we're hearing turf fields and maybe some indoor facilities, you know, and that's something that we will review. Once again, just kind of a reiteration of what we've heard. Programming, what type of programming? Abby's here now, which is an amazing job. The Easter egg hunt was incredible. We didn't blow away. Thank goodness. Outdoor recreation seems to be something that we're hearing through these surveys, maybe because of North Park and we're trying to distinguish that. We've heard a lot about the lake and, you know, that's something that is an amenity of the town of McCandless, but it's not something that you have control over. But there's other ways to get people outdoors as well. Concerts and family events are right now the top top three things that we heard in programming. Abby seems to be right on board with that. Farmers markets, nature walks, bird watching, those types of things. And then during the in the questionnaire itself, we did identify each park and really ask specific questions for each of those parks. So we'll take a really good close look at that. I just pulled Walpark out kind of because I also talked to Joe Wall. But that's one of the parks that we're hearing a lot from with the key person interviews as well. It's a great park. The parking's a little congested, but we have really, it just seems like that one was rising to the top for some reason. So what I did just for tonight's presentation is I took a look at what was expressed at Walpark and we started to design a concept. If you want to switch to the concept there. Plan for invasive species, that's everywhere in Pennsylvania. It's an ongoing battle. I'm sure the EAC is very well aware of the struggle for that. So we will take a look at how we can eradicate some of that and replace with some native species. Parking, pickleball, pickleball is happy everywhere, I think. The basketball court there is in disrepair. Last time I was there, there was actually a child in there that had climbed the fence to play basketball in there because the the gate was locked. We're hearing, you know, ticks on those fields from the Athletic Association that, you know, there's there's a tick concern. Ticks are really bad in Western PA, but for some reason they seem to be down in Walpark. And we also are hearing, you know, the new playground is wonderful. Maybe addition of some swings down the down the road. So what we did just for really this meeting as we start to develop these draft concept plans is I I put together a little concept for Walpark. This hasn't even gone to the committee yet or to council or to a public meeting, but just to give you an idea of, you know, how this process will work and, you know, how we will take a look at what can be improved or changed or maybe nothing. And maybe there's there's an area that need should be looked at for different aspects of parks and recreation. Really, our our firm is all about implementing implementation. It doesn't make sense to put things in a book and let them sit on a shelf. It does take time. It does take funding and it does take cooperation from the community to make things things happen. But we really try not to just make the wish list of these plans. You know, what really should happen? How can this happen? What kind of funding is out there? So that's really our our process of planning here. We also will develop some additional active transportation, wayfinding and connections during this planning process. Maybe connect to Hampton through North Park. And then our next steps, we're going to take the survey results back to the steering committee and kind of flush it through and really take a look at what priorities there are. And then we'll have another public meeting in June and then move forward from there. Probably another public meeting in July. July gets a little crazy with vacations, so sometimes they're not as well attended as as earlier in the summer. But I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Well done.
Thank you.
Well done.
I do have a question. In relationship to the key person interviews that you're doing, if this council decides to move forward with the park on the drive, will we be able to bring in some of the residents who may be impacted by opening up that part of Potter Park?
Yeah, absolutely. I I think it's a wonderful opportunity. You really green space in this area is very difficult to come by. One of the priorities in the state SCORP, the comprehensive plan, is preservation of open space, especially when it is continuous to an existing green space. That really just changes the whole dynamics of that that preservation than just a little pocket park. But absolutely, I think it would be very beneficial to have a focus group meeting and start to really kind of intertwine this into into this plan itself. If if in fact, the the town moves forward.
And and kind of going along with that, again, if this is decided, do you feel bringing this new question to the table, is that going to impact how you're performing your study of your survey, things like that?
The new question as far as.
Is what to do with the if with this new seventeen acres that wasn't here when?
When we started the process, it happens in many of these plans. Sometimes parks are sold or buildings are shut down. There's a lot of opportunities that we can't foresee when we start these plans. So it's not uncommon for us to have to take a step backwards to move forward again. So we'll, you know, if they do acquire, if you do acquire the property, we absolutely will intertwine it. We'll make sure that the public's aware of that at any public meeting. You know, maybe have him in a separate questionnaire, at least the focus group with the folks that live post close to the park.
Any other questions for other? Okay. Great job. Very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Moving on to liaison reports, financial development promotional committee for Heritage and Culture.
There was a meeting held, they decided to move forward with the fundraiser on November first. The gala at it'll be at the Camelot since there is no more. And also the family event staying in May will be a speaker from the Allegheny Observatory. And if you go to that meeting, you will be invited to the Allegheny Observatory later in the month. And the details are on the website. Thank you.
If any questions.
I just want to comment, I used to live in the shadow of the observatory. It's really worth a trip.
Oh, absolutely. You're also going to have an economist, correct?
That's later.
Activities advisory ad hoc committee this quarter, it seems there was no.
No meeting, but I do want to thank the activities committee for the Easter egg hunt again.
Okay. If this time, is there any public comment on recreation? Please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing none. Town manager report.
Managers reports in the packet. I'll highlight a few few of the items in the list. Interview process for finance director position. The end of the first round interviews will be held tomorrow and second round interviews will begin after that. Advertisement period for the planning director, the re-advertising period closes April thirtieth. We have a number of very good applicants in the pool this time, so I'm I'm excited about that. Active shooter, mental health awareness training for employees will be held on April thirtieth as well. And our finance department met with our banking relationship. We are going to restructure a few bank accounts and also I'm going to authorize a money market account to be opened with general fund balance in order to earn a better interest rate. We're able to get about a point and a half better than we were before, so that's exciting. And the grant end of things submitted applications for early grants for intersection improvements this month. And also, as you see later in your packet, there's a resolution to apply for a PA small water and sewer grant for lining of storm sewer pipes in the town. Building and grounds highlight is the wonderful pickleball sidewalk is completed. Our public works did an excellent job. That was all in house. So if you look at the work they did back there and including the pickleball shed they put in, they they really outdid themselves back there.
What's in the shed?
Pickleball supplies.
What else you put in?
You know, things of that nature. Under our public works and infrastructure highlight, earth date planning happened at the fill site. Pine trees were planted and the beautification started. Also, we met with residents along Ridge Road and the Eichner Valley areas regarding flooding concerns. Parks and Rec, I do want to comment that tick control has been applied to Walpark, so you can check that off your list. It'll obviously have to recur as the year goes on. Be happy to answer any questions you had about anything else in the report.
Questions from anyone in council? Seeing none. The engineers report was in your packet. Kelly is here if anyone has any questions. Thank you for highlighting the changes. Town attorney's report.
Report was also in your packet and we can talk about any questions you might have in our post meeting executive session. I also wanted to mention that the pre-meeting executive session discussed legal matters that came to the place of the solicitor, which would be the same reason for the post meeting executive session.
That's all I have. Steve.
Yes, sir.
Would you mind maybe laying some of their fears about buying real estate?
I think I think what he means specifically to ask is can you discuss the.
Hold on, can we hold that till we get to that? Yeah, let's get through one of these others. Let's don't, don't keep me out of business here. So moving from the town attorney's report, we're going to go to old business here. And the first item up is action concerning adoption of ordinance number one, five, five, seven. This is flag lots. If you remember, I'll let John take over.
I don't know how much more we want to talk about flag lots. It's been in front of planning commission. It's had its public hearing. It's been advertised properly. This basically is defining it in order to prevent it. So it was a loophole in the zoning that we caught and needed to fix.
Okay, is there a motion?
Oh, thank you.
Mr. G.
Motion to adopt ordinance number one, five, five, seven of the town council of the town of McCandless, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, amending the town code of ordinances, part thirteen, zoning ordinance has amended to revise section one, three, zero, six, point, two, three, zero, definition words in terms beginning with owl to add a definition of lot flag.
There is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the purchase and sale agreement for probably located at twelve, zero, one van drive.
I make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash zero four resolution of the town of McCandless, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania. Authorizing the acquisition of real properties located in twelve oh one van drive and identified as Allegheny County blocks and lot numbers one, zero, seven and dash zero, seven and dash and dash two, nine, seven and one, zero, seven and dash and dash one, one, seven for public park and recreational purposes.
Second. There's been a motion in a second. Is there further discussion?
I would just like to add that I think this is an incredible, once in a lifetime opportunity we have to double the size of the park, to preserve green space in our town. I think we have talked about preserving and adding on to green space in the town for a long time. It's something we've heard our residents say a lot of, and I'm excited that we are finally doing it tonight.
No, I I grew up in New York and I actually caught my first fish in pot. But that's of note because it wasn't a very big fish. But I will say this. We're not creating more land. The McCandless is almost out of land. And the bottom line for me is this gives us opportunities. Hanging on to the land is great. I don't know that we need to know what's going to happen tomorrow or the day after. Obtaining this land gives us flexibility over the long haul. And quite frankly, I think it will impact our community positively for the next one hundred years.
Any other further discussion? Anything to add? Mr. Schwann.
I'll say that I did receive, I received three emails from residents with questions about this, one of which was read into the record tonight. There were a few questions, you know, and I can I can go through a couple of the answers just so everybody can hear them too. You know, a question about, you know, where the purchase price would come from. It's a four hundred and seventy five thousand dollar purchase price, which would be from our reserve fund right now. It's in the general fund reserves. Concern was issued raised about would taxes have to be raised to purchase this property? And the answer to that is no. What what does, I think, when the question was asked about what do public recreation purposes mean? I think that kind of stems back to a theme that a few people spoke to about tonight, which is, you know, what are we going to do here? And I think I answered in that question that, you know, the purchases to purchase this blank canvas. Don't know what we're going to do there yet. And honestly, I don't think that we need to. I think that the the purchase of that canvas comes from that two thousand nineteen plan. You heard some of you ran on platforms about enhancing green space, expanding parks, et cetera. What gets painted on that canvas? There's still plenty of room for input on that through the parks and recreation plan that's currently in place. So what happens there and getting those neighbors involved, the Jason is a great idea, specifically targeting them now that they would be adjacent to this new area. In addition to that, comments have been brought up about improving right of ways and access to Potter Park. You know, we do have something in the works as far as a right of way agreement to one half of that, but this also provides unique opportunity for access that we don't know how it'll look yet, but it's there. There's a there's a public road that touches this land that touches Potter Park. How that'll look, I don't know. That's what we have to determine and that's what the input from, you know, everybody who's in town, who's resident and constituent otherwise can get. So there were a few other questions and I'm going to probably miss some of them as I go through here, but I'm just trying to touch base on some of the important ones. And if I miss any, just go ahead and shout them out at me. It wasn't included in the budget. No, it was not. We'll have to properly pass a budget amendment if necessary for the charter. Closing costs and taxes, there was a question about back taxes. The property owner did pay those back taxes this week with a credit card, so that is not an issue. Questions about the comprehensive plan, I think I addressed that. Questions about flooding concerns, you know, while this doesn't necessarily directly mitigate a flooding concern, we did hear from downstream neighbors today that preventing development in this area obviously would have a reduction on potential future impervious surface, which does help mitigate runoff and flooding concerns in the town as a whole. I think that was the the bulk of the questions. You know, there was a one page flyer that Abby did put together after I received the first email set of questions. We thought it would be a great idea to, you know, kind of answer this and and tie it into that two thousand nineteen plan and how it can be tied into the current plan also. Question had come up about partnering with Allegheny Land Trust for this. You know, typically the way the land trust works on these is they'll front the money and you'll end up buying it back off them eventually. You can try to apply for a grant to buy that back. In this case, we did talk to a few representatives. We talked with our engineer. We've also mentioned this to Representative Vent Cat's office. You can apply retroactively to get the money back from the DCNR, I think it is for this. Whether you'd get it or not, I don't know. You know, McCandless is in a pretty. Whether you'd get it or not, I don't know, you know, McCandless is in a pretty uh, good position financially, and I think they look at some of those as need-based opportunities, uh, but we're still going to try no matter what anyway. So the idea definitely had come across the table, uh, about that land trust, but also basically due to timeline. It was a little more efficient for us to go ahead and make a purchase rather than negotiate them fronting it, you know, they have to find donors basically to find the money to do it. It's a little bit more complicated, it just slows things down sometimes. And, and I think this was a situation where it's important that we take action now to get this piece and then figure out how we're going to make it beautiful. Or nothing?
Hey, Mr. Corb, well, just to speak to kind of what Jack, Jack had asked you about, um, in regards to that, the timing and the purchase of land, if you could speak to that.
Yeah, so, so under the Sunshine Act, it's questions around this. Obviously, you can't come here and, and we're going to look at that project, right? We all, I think, because it will be public, et cetera. Uh, but also in, in these real estate transactions, like the, the sellers are typically aren't willing to sit around and wait um, for us to um, have some elaborate uh, process beyond what we are required to do under the law, which is what we're doing. It's been published in the agenda, there's been two public comment uh, periods, uh, two meetings worth of public comments, et cetera. Real estate transactions can be fast, I don't, I'm not so sure that we could have, we could move forward with this. We had to stretch the timeline out any further than we did, there was a lot of negotiation around that, and I think the closing was scheduled for the first week of September. A lot of that is to accommodate the owner with, uh, removing articles from the property, including barn. So it from, from my perspective as the town attorney, the council and the town have checked all the boxes. It complied with all the requirements in order to consider this.
Okay, thank you. Um, there has been a motion in a second.
I just want to make a couple of comments on why I am supporting this as well. Uh, when I was campaigning years ago, I heard from many residents and um, really three big things that came up, green space, storm water, here. We all probably heard that, or sitting up here.
Yep.
And this is one of the few things that we can actually, it's blankets, all of those things. Which is rare, very rare that something can be seen as a possible solution to so many of our critical, critical issues here. Couple other things I'm looking as, uh, when I have my grilled tour hat on, I know that looking at Allegheny County, the municipalities, if you take out the county parks, the municipalities that have more green space also have higher median prices of their homes. So this is increasing, I can't guarantee it, but I'm going to say it is going to add value to everybody. I also am very concerned about, um, the folks downstream, that there is a waterway through here, a small creek. And I love the idea of both possibly managing that creek and preventing uh, buildup. Um, and some people ask for about the zoning, this is zone very low density. Which um, still allows for homes to be on half acre lots, they're like, Mr. Um, John said, we, there could be twenty thousand. Or something like that, which would, you know, you think of what somebody who's spending a million dollars on their house, what the amount of surface area a house of that size and a driveway and their three garages is going to take up. Um, a couple of other things that haven't been mentioned, um. I'm on a council, I was the first Democrat sitting up here, I'm now joined by Nick. I don't know if a council with a majority Republicans would ever vote for this again. My friend, Mr. Hart, to give him the degree of spending any money. This guy does not agree to spend money. Unless there's an extremely good reason for it, and he's with me on this as well. I really think the timing is right. Council, we needed to move, we needed to move with an expedience to make this happen. And I am in full support of this, but I thank you all for your feedback and impact and your input and everything, and I hope that you're all going to be a part of what's happening with our park survey.
I'd like to echo Trish's comments, uh. This is, this is a really easy choice, this is either going to be development, a bunch of big houses. Or it's going to be an open space or green space, that's the choice, wasn't hard. I think you'll, if you look at it that way, you'll, you'll, you'll agree.
I want to say you all missed, that's exactly what I wanted to hear from you before.
You missed the point, we didn't want to drive up the price. Okay, thank, thank you. Um, is there any other comment or anything, then at this time, uh, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, next item up is the Ridge Carson Eco Village, uh, partial bond release, our engineer has reviewed this, we see these from time to time. Um, they've modified, it's been, uh, posted here as that modification. Um, is there a motion out there?
A motion, uh, motion to approve partial bond release, number one. Ridge Carson Eco Village Performance Bond, the amount of seventy four thou, five hundred and seven dollars and eight cents for the town engineer, we, the review letter dated March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Arlo, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Uh, next item up here, uh, was talked about here with our solicitor, we're going to table this. Further discussion, please.
I'll make a motion to table the Blazer Drive subdivision number five amendment, spring morgue and subdivision. Submitted mine.
We're good with that, we're just going to go with that first part, so there's a motion table, second by Trish, all those in favor to table this, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Uh, next item up is a resolution, and this is for a small water and sewer grant for pipelining. Uh, it requires a resolution of council order to apply for it, so that's why you're seeing in front of you today. Uh, so this is just a motion to apply, somebody's willing to make that. Mr. Hart?
Second, mo- motion to adopt resolution, uh, twenty twenty five resolution of town McCandless. Uh, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, authorizing application for the Pennsylvania Small Water and Sewer Grant, the amount of four hundred and ninety five thousand, three hundred and fifty two dollars, ninety seven dollars. Thank you. And designating the council president and town manager as signatories.
Second. So there's been a motion in second, and just to clarify, that total amount for the record is four hundred and ninety seven thousand, three hundred and fifty two dollars. There's been a motion in a second, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Uh, next is discussion action regarding the May town council meeting schedule. Uh, the meeting in May is our normal second and fourth Friday, the fourth Friday falls Monday. Monday. Falls on Memorial Day, therefore it was scheduled for the previous Monday. And the thought process here is with meetings being so close together to consolidate down to the second Monday and just have one meeting in May. Uh, as far as how that looks, we've done that in the past at times when it falls this way. And the, the only report I think we may miss is an EAC report, everything else will be included, the minutes for the EAC, all other meetings will still continue to happen, the minutes just would not be present for that. Um, so if that's something council wants to do, we will need a motion, uh, to cancel the second scheduled meeting in May.
I, I made the cancel the second meeting in May.
So there has been a motion, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second, Mr. G or Jetty, any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Uh, next item up is
What will be the date and?
It will be the second, uh, there will be one meeting in May and it will be the second Monday of May.
May twelfth.
May twelfth, thank you, I don't have a calendar in front of me. Okay, next item up here is something John brought to my attention of a hundred and seventy five years. The one seventy five celebration will be next year, two thousand and twenty six. And John and I think staff and, you know, members of council are looking to establish a committee to help with this, much like we have committee and help and volunteers for our community today, we want to formalize something and have a one seventy five ad hoc committee, so as the um, rights of the president of council, I'm going to establish a McCandless one seventy five ad hoc committee. And uh, I tasked Mr. Schwend, uh, to put together a application process for those members, I believe Ms. Clunin, as our activities advisory chair, should also serve on that committee. And I leave it to Ms. Clunin and Mr. Schwend to handle it from there, so.
Uh, well, to, to fill you in, that's an exciting time, next year is the hundred and seventy fifth anniversary for McCandless. Uh, a landing page will be advertised and created, McCandless one seventy five dot org, you should be able to memorize that, that's where all the updates will occur. We will put out a um, application for any residents who'd like to be part of this committee. Application has ten questions, I think. Uh, you'll submit that application by deadline, which hasn't been created yet, but it'll be advertised at each one of these meetings. And we'll put it on the website also and Facebook, uh, apply, and then we'll review those applications and select members for the committee.
So we're just getting out there, just getting started, this is the first change you got to hear about it, but have some involvement and more information will come about that, so, thank you for that. Uh, at this time, is there any public non-agenda comments, please come forward, state your name and address?
Dennis Rupert, one oh four seven five Linden Road. I have a few suggestions regarding the town street paving program, specifically the tree trimming that accompanies it. One, post the information provided in the letter that's sent to homeowners about trees or shrubs that are in the way somewhere on the town's website. I had several trees trimmed this past winter by a professional tree service company. Had I known about the eighteen foot height requirement, I would have shared that information with my arborist. Note that the best time to prune trees is in the winter, not spring or summer. Two, use a better qualified tree service rather than some guys with a chainsaw. I had several employees of American Tree Service try to tell me that the pin oak in the front corner of my property was a maple tree. In no way does a pin oak look like a maple tree. Employees of a tree service company should know a little bit about trees. Three, pick a company with a published address and that has taken the time to register as a Pennsylvania home improvement contractor. I realize this may not be required for tree service companies, but note that many such companies that operate in the area are registered. This includes Davy Tree, Bartlett, Pusiteri Brothers, and Adler Tree Service, just to name a few. Four, notify homeowners that will be impacted prior to April. And five, keep the paving program information on the town's website up to date. Right now, the twenty twenty four streets are still listed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, for your comments.
I will address those comments too, I appreciate everything you said, and I agree a hundred percent with that. Uh, the specifications for tree trimming contractors will be rewritten for next year, and there'll be a more stringent requirement for who can bid on that. We did accept the lowest bid this time, uh, it was with requirements which should have been enhanced, and they'll be enhanced for next year. Sorry you had to deal with this.
Other non-public agenda comments?
Bless you. Marcia Caliendo, one oh five two nine Abby. Um, I just want to remind council that, you know, we have, uh, on, had submitted to, uh, from the ambulance assist authority, a five-year proposal funding model. Um, and we haven't heard anything on that yet, I know that you've been in negotiations and executive session on that. Um, Mr. Schwend, thank you for making the comment saying that we're pretty well-funded, because, you know, we fully anticipate the full five years at the funding amounts that we have requested. Um, I requested it amounts, uh, through the five years go from ten fifty four household in twenty twenty six through to thirteen eighty three per household in twenty thirty. Um, McCandless makes up forty five percent of the population of our five community service. But McCandless represents over sixty percent of the coal volume. Um, we have recently gone into five-year contracts with Pine, Marshall and Bradford Woods. All who swore to me last summer, they would never agree to a funding model based on households because of McCandless's usage. We got them to agree to a funding model based on households. We truly hope that you will consider the full funding for the full five years. Michael Park is still negotiating with us, but they're waiting because they want to see what McCandless is doing, because they've said they will not be the only incorporating municipality that, uh, will get into any type of long-term funding. So I hope that, uh, since we've just spent five hundred thousand dollars almost, that you will also see fit to pay ten dollars and fifty four cents per household to help fund and continue the excellent service that the ambulance service, uh, authority provides.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other non-agenda comments?
Couldn't have Marcia speak twice and Iron Caliendo, one oh five five eight Castle Lane. First of all, uh, thank you, Councilwoman Clunin, for mentioning the um, library gala. I want to thank all of the council members who attended, it was a, a smashing success. I do want to give credit where credit is due, it was due mostly to our um, director of the foundation, Alexis McKinley, and our terrific foundation board of which we have a member here today, Rita Martin. And they really did a yeoman's job, and we appreciate it, and we appreciate the support. Um, I also want to take just sixty more seconds and say that we all love green space, and everyone who spoke against the measure today was not speaking against green space or the idea of it. It was the process, you kept us in the dark, it was behind closed doors. Now you're patting us on the head and say, oh, we know better and just trust us. We are intelligent people, we are interested people, and we are your tax base. So we are owed the facts before you spend a half million dollars. And that was the point, not that it was a bad decision, the point was we didn't know. And you need to do a better job on that, because this is not the first time we have been kept in the dark, that's all I'm.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments, please?
My name is Chris Cifordi, I'm an attorney for Michelle's Dance Center at nine eight two five Perry Highway. I'm coming to address a safety concern, looking for some solutions. So i- if you can picture where this building is, it's, it's the gardener building along Vestal and, and Pine Creek there. Every baseball season, we have the same problem, which is people coming from Pine Creek through the parking lot of the gardener building, coming out and going the wrong way northbound in the southbound lands of, of nineteen, to turn into Vestal Park. Rather than going up the hill and coming back down to go in the correct way, or parking along Pine Creek and going across the bridge. I, uh, called to talk to the town manager's office last week, was directed to the police department and spoke to them. Um, they had people out watching between five and seven on I think Wednesday and Thursday of last week, and pulled over five cars one day, I think seven the other.
Wow.
Um, it's a consistent issue, and I'm not sure why people are normally doing that, but doing it at a high rate of speed through our parking lot. We have three hundred girls there on a weekly basis, some of which are very small down to age two. That is a crazy parking lot at all times, we cannot have cars going through to again go the wrong way on nineteen to turn into Vestal Park. And so I don't know what can be done about something perhaps on the shoulder there to not allow that turn to have some kind of a signage there, maybe prohibiting a left turn. At least that would then give the police the ability to charge it as failure to, uh, be a traffic control device, suppose it is. as opposed to just careless driving right now. Maybe increasing patrol specifically, but something has to be done. It's a significant safety issue. Someone is going to get seriously, seriously hurt by a car there inadvertently, obviously. But it is a concern every single day, Monday through Friday between five and seven in that parking lot. And I'm just looking for some kind of solutions about who I should be speaking to, to get to those solutions.
Mr. Cafferty, correct me if I'm wrong, but if I am traveling north on Route nineteen, there's absolutely no way because of road construction that happened previously. People used to turn from the Northbound lanes into Vestal Field.
Yep, when I was a kid.
I was a kid too. It's a long time ago. Longer for maintenance. But the bottom line is, is that, that once they put in that road construction and it was designed to make Route nineteen safer, the only way through there is like go through your parking lot, correct?
Well.
It used to be that the parking lot was open on the one end instead of the front.
I think, you know, that with rallying team being a pen dot road, our hands are tied with what we can do there, but I think our town manager can reach out.
Yeah, let me follow up with the chief. Hopefully he addressed some of your concerns and let's, uh, revisit this.
How about we talk to IFPL too? Maybe they can restrict parking to only coaches and they can control it that way.
So we have reached out to IFP. Um, they were supposed to send an email last week about the concerns and directed to not come through the parking lot to get to Vestal.
We can tell them we'll just shut the entrance down. Well, so I mean.
That's certainly your, your discretion. I just can't have a girl get killed in her parking lot.
Listen to us.
Yeah.
We'll get back to you after we take a better look.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
And we did, we do take safety.
Oh, I, I know. And that's why I'm here just to raise the issue because I assume most of you were, were not aware, you know? And, and my compliments to this board, I am at a lot of these meetings. Uh, this is the most respectful back and forth I've seen in any meeting I've been at in probably at least the last five years. So.
Thank you.
Congratulations to all of you. Just something as simple as having your eyes up and clearly taking notes as people speak is a low standard, but I've not seen it up by any board. By, by any board I've been in front of in years and I'm not kidding you. So I, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other non-agenda public comments?
John Harrison, fourteen seventy-three Hedwig Allison Park. Um, I think there was some misunderstanding from the general population on how a real estate deal works of, of this. Let me, let me speak. Cause if we got it, then we wouldn't be having these issues. But when you're in a position where somebody is offering you a deal before it hits the public, there is a huge difference and they're coming to you with basically a golden goose and they're saying, hey, we're going to give this to McCandless at a great price before it gets advertised, before it gets out there. Because once it gets out there, if I'm a developer, I'm going to go to the person who has the golden goose and say, you know what? You're offering them, they're offering you three hundred thousand dollars. I'm going to give you six hundred thousand dollars. And as me being the person with the golden goose, I'm going to say McCandless, sorry. So deals being worked out behind closed doors, that's how real estate works. If you haven't sold a house in McCandless in the last five years, most houses now, and Trish can, will attest to it, most houses now do not go for the price that they're listed for. I have two houses on my street on Hedwig. One went for twenty-five thousand dollars over the asking price. Now, had there been a deal that was done prior to that, that was out in the public, that homeowner wouldn't have made twenty-five thousand extra dollars. There was another house that made, went for a selling price of thirty-two thousand dollars over asking price. Now, as the neighbors of other, everybody having houses were like, holy heck, this is crazy. But what it does is it increases everybody's part, property values of what they're worth. So people need to understand that don't be giving these guys and women a hard time during the board for what they did. You guys did a good job. If you're able to close the deal, you did a great job. So, thank you for what you did. Thank you for the green space. And thank you for not having more houses built and creating more water. Yes, you did a good job tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public non-agenda comments? Seeing none, uh, we will adjourn into executive sessions in regards to legal matters. Those in favor in the jury, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everybody.